Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Say go ani buju wachea kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, we will officially call this meeting to order. Mr Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Thank you. So next, we will move to the approval of the addits. We have an amendment to a delegation, the addition of a delegation, an additional motion of congratulations, and another item, another clause to report number 90. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Neil Secan, by Deputy Mayor Shell. Please vote. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. And I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 2, Report Number 90. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict in the portion of this Report 18-35 that deals with the appointment of waterway officers and associated bylaws. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 4, Report Number 90. I declare an interest in the Report 18-358 insofar as it relates to Utilities Kingston. I would ask that the Report 18-358 be separated out so I may vote on the portions that are not in regard to the utilities. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 6, Report Number 90. And again, I declare an interest in the Report 18-358 insofar as it relates to Utilities Kingston. And I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Information Report Number 6 in Report 18-382 insofar as it relates to Utilities Kingston. Thank you.
Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 91, Clause 2, as I have a family member that runs a short-term rental.
Seeing no other disclosures, we will move on. Next, to presentations, we do have one presentation where I will present the Long Service Committee Volunteer Recognition Awards. So earlier this evening, we had a reception in Memorial Hall to, first of all, say thank you. Thank you to all of the citizens that have devoted so much of their time and energy over the last number of years to be able to contribute to the business that we do around this table, to be able to provide advice, whether that's through a citizen advisory committee or serving on a number of different local boards. So we have a number of individuals here tonight that we would like to recognise specifically for the length of their service and dedication to city committees and boards. So I'm going to ask, as I call your name, if you can come up, we have a little plaque for you, and we'll just ask if you just want to remain standing up at the front, and then once all of us are up here, we'd just like to take a group photo. So our first recipient tonight is Barbara Aitken from the Kingston Frattonak Public Library Board. Our next recipient is Christine Cannon from the Committee of Adjustment. Next, from the Downtown Kingston BIA Board of Management, Maria Kronk. And next, from the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum, Robert Foster. Our next recipient is from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, that was Kim Murray, who passed away earlier this year, and so tonight, this award will be accepted Our next recipient from the Kingston Frattonak Public Library Board is Monica Stewart. And our final recipient from Heritage Kingston, Dawn Taylor. Sorry, and one final entry that I have here, of course, from the Rural Advisory Committee, none other than George Sutherland. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating these recipients. So moving on, we have two delegations this evening. First, Megan Naught, Executive Director of the Kingston Accommodation Partners, and Murray Matheson, interim Executive Director of Tourism Kingston, will appear before council to speak to Clause 2, Report Number 91, received from the Administrative Policies Committee with respect to the residential rental licensing. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes. Ms Naught.
Oh yeah, super, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, thank you, council. So my name is Megan Naught. I am the Executive Director of Kingston Accommodation Partners. Murray Matheson, who also represents Tourism Kingston for the time being, couldn't be here tonight, but I know we speak in unison towards the support of a licensing program for short-term rentals. The reason that we do this as industry partners is that we're working quite closely with the Hotel Association of Canada on regulatory tools, if you will, to modernise short-term rental accommodations, and they actually put forward several reports, but three important notes that we wanted to bring forward for discussion tonight are one that we're really aware, from a health and safety standard perspective, with tourists coming into and utilising the tools of shared accommodators like Airbnbs, Airbnb, VRBO, that type of thing, that it's really important to know that from a hotel's perspective, we really emphasise and educate our staff and our teams about things like human trafficking, which is a huge issue within hotels and other accommodators, and is slowly moving or creeping into the shared accommodation space where there's really no safeguarding or no training for those that own these type of properties. And so we just want to flag that that issue is very predominant, especially because we're on a 401 corridor, and so oftentimes, we deal with these type of red flags, if you will, working with local police officers and others to just safeguard, I guess, our guests and our residents alike. And so there are possibilities and safety standards that we'd like to just work with in terms of that type of industry and in terms of being able to offer safe properties for tourists alike to come and to come back, because there's nothing worse than having, and we get calls at the Hotel Association about safety standards within shared accommodations because we're the only kind of number essentially, or tool, they can find to call and to report some spaces that are really not safe for renting. Reporting to metrics, we're all about a data-driven type of organisation, and so really nice to know who's coming into the city, where they came from, how long they're staying. There's not a lot of correlation right now between the shared accommodation space and the data we track, so this is something we'd like to work with in terms of having some regulatory tools around this. We'd really like to share data. And taxation, so as you all know, the municipal accommodation tax came into play this past August in Kingston. In other municipalities like Ottawa, for example, when their regulatory space came in with shared accommodators, they also brought in the MAT tax, and so we'd be in full support of asking that the MAT tax be applied to the shared accommodator space as it is the hotel industry. And so I think these are three important points that we would just like to support in terms of pushing this sort of forward. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Ms Naught. So regarding the tax, and that was fairly recent, I remember that fairly clearly, is it true then, if we don't do something like this to be able to capture the Airbnb-type accommodation providers and be able to collect that 4% MAT tax from them through this method? Is it true that they would have an unfair competitive advantage in the ways that they overlap with the traditional accommodation that your organisation provides, and what other ramifications would there be?
Among others, yes, but it's the regulatory issues also that, you know, things like fire alarms and things like security measures that are in spaces, things like taxation in terms of properties, like I think there are a few things that probably need to be addressed in terms of what a standalone traditional hotel space, or B&amp;B, or an inn, you know, sort of go through in terms of creating safe spaces for guests, and then what a shared accommodator doesn't go through currently. So I think there's a few topics of discussion, not just a municipal tax.
And understand the tax, the MAT tax mostly for the, for marketing, the Kingston has a destination, and is it not true that the, these other providers that aren't currently paying the tax are actually benefiting without paying for that marketing that comes from the tax?
Absolutely. I think that the destination, so if you're offering a stay, no matter if you're a traditional or non-traditional stay, you're benefiting from, I think, the work that the destination does in terms of the sales force that Tourism Kingston has, or the marketing that CAP supports. I mean, absolutely. Friends and family, though, are key and utmost, and I think the collection of who comes into the city, and so I think there's a shared, I guess, conversation between city residents that ask people to come and experience the destination and us, so I, you know, I can only speak for us in terms of the traditional marketing we do.
Yes, Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Just to kind of build on some of those comments, I'm never really a big fan of taxes to begin with. I know we have to have them, we have to pay for them, but adding this tax, could you paint a picture, I guess, a little bit more about how having this tax actually leverages money from other people coming in and kind of combines all this so that people actually see Kingston as a destination?
So, Councillor Bohm, I mean, you've gotten a little bit of leeway on this, but the item before us is not actually the tax, it's the residential licensing program, so can you tie the question to the residential licensing?
Sure, so with the residential licensing, kind of, I guess, pairing that with kind of a tax, yeah, all right, I'll just always draw that.
Any other questions to do with this particular? Okay, thank you. So Ms Naught, we'll have you stay here because you're also listed as the second delegation. You will also be joined with Alex Janson, Film Officer from Tourism Kingston, to appear before council to speak to Clause 3 of Report Number 90, received from the CAO with respect to the Kingston Penitentiary Tours 2019.
So hello, me again, Megan Naught, Kingston Accommodation Partners, as well as my associate, Alex Janson. I believe we have a slide deck.
There you go.
Super. So I'll let Alex speak to the first point.
Great. And so, yeah, thank you very much for your, for your time, Mayor Patterson, and for the members of council. I'm just going to give a quick update on where things are at with the Kingston Film Office, which was formed earlier this year, talk a little bit about what's happening within the province, and then speak to the opportunities that present themselves with the Kingston Penitentiary. So for those of you I haven't met, I'm new to the role since the start of this year, but I have longstanding relationship with Kingston, having studied as a student at Queen's in the film programme, originally ran the screening room, started the Kingston Canadian Film Festival, and then in the, over the last 10 years, I've started to inch my way back while running a production company out of Toronto, and then now teaching the last seven years at Queen's. So there are a lot of, a lot of relationships and really vested into seeing Kingston's potential as a, as a film destination. So with that said, on the provincial side, it's been a record year, 2017, 2018 will be the same record year for production, 250 major productions, major film and television, 1.6 billion spent in Ontario, that's on film and television alone, not into commercial productions for commercials or into the overall interactive digital media sector. That's looking at 32,800 jobs created and on track for 1 million in square footage of stage space that's going to be purpose-built for, within the province of Ontario by 2022. Further to that, Netflix has committed 500 million into original production over, over the next, over the next year, oh, sorry, over the next five years, and CBS has also announced that they'll be moving stage space with a 26,000-square-foot facility into the Toronto area. Locally in Kingston, what we've been doing, we've been really building up the infrastructure for how we can support production as it comes in, so a combination of supporting the local production community and developing the infrastructure to attract film and television production. A lot of that has been basically inventorying the area, shooting 50, 50-plus locations that have all gone into the provincial database where scouts and producers will start searching. We've had 20-plus scout tours from people's Star Trek: Discovery, Handmaid's Tale, Shadow Hunters, a whole series of different top scouts into the area in May. We'll have another one coming up early in the next few months. 50-plus productions of different, different variety within, within the Kingston area, streamline the permitting process, and now for city properties, returning permits in a 24-to-48-hour period. We started developing training exercises and employment opportunities for local production companies and to start to develop that crew base. We've been doing monthly industry workshops in partnership with Queen's Film and Media. We started announcing to larger industry, we did a big reception into Toronto to 350 alumni and industry from Queen's Film and Media and the broader industry in April, and then we did a whole series of initiatives during the Toronto International Film Festival this September. Speaking to Kingston Penitentiary, there's been quite a bit of, quite a bit of demand, but for various reasons, and I think there's ways that we can make it more attractive. Some of these productions have, have been unable to shoot, and I think this is where we have a real opportunity to streamline what we do with the tours and opening up Kingston Pen for production. Some of the productions that were quite interested but were unable to, to shoot for a variety of reasons, Suicide Squad was interested in shooting here, Castle Rock was very interested in doing a two-to-three-week shoot, which would have included all the Shawshank sequences shot right here in Kingston. A lot of the time, we can't announce what the productions are because they haven't been disclosed yet, but HBO has a large-scale series that's going to be filling one of the Game of Thrones slots when, when that, when that ends, that they were scouting for. Warner Brothers also has another production that they were quite interested in, and we work closely with the Ontario Film Commission. So to that end, the report is that there was more than 40 inquiries onto Kingston Pen just in the last calendar year. So speaking to, if we were to have more production here, some of the opportunities, so based on guidelines from Infrastructure Ontario or from the Ontario Film Commission, you'd be looking at the range of 5,000 to 7,000 per day for, for shooting. Typical shoot would be usually two to three weeks, depending on the scale of it, and then you get a half rate for, for what's called setup and striking, so the, the setup and the turning down, and that also speaks to there's a real opportunity for, for potential stage or a soundstage or studio space within Kingston Pen, so incredible opportunity.
30 seconds.
So I guess I, the tail end of that is just to say that we're, we're really encouraged about 2019 tours and that we will work with the St Lawrence Parks Commission and our Film Office to accommodate tours as they need to adjust to the Film Office to allow for both functions within the space.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Councillor Shell.
Uh, Patterson, so up until now, there hasn't been filming inside the prison, I understand, but there, there is a change this year with the contract that you will be able to work with film companies to be inside the prison?
Yeah, I, there has, there has been, I mean, most notably was, was Aaliyah, but otherwise, it's been challenging, even that, that production presented some problems for how you could set it up strategically, so, but the idea now is to start working hand-in-hand a lot more, and especially with St Lawrence Parks Commission, who we work with regularly on the Film Office side for, for productions at Fort Henry and whatnot, the idea is to try to streamline things as much as we can. So that would allow us to then, in the off-season, when there aren't, when there aren't currently tours, October to April, we'd be able to do shooting, but then what we're trying to do is see how we can work together towards making sure that the, the productions that come in could work with the tours and seamlessly together, and I think there's a real opportunity, having worked with, with SLPC on that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so moving on, we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we have a couple of additional motions. We have a motion of congratulations first from the addits, moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Stroud. The Kingston City Council extends its congratulations to former Kingstonian Rahab Panjwani, who received the title of international grand master from the World Chess Federation at its congress held in Batumi, Georgia in October. Rahab Panjwani, now 28, lived with his family in Kingston from early 2000 until spring 2004, receiving instruction and competition at the Kingston Chess Club. During that time, Rahab became a national master strength player, a multiple Canadian national youth champion, and had first won the title of Kingston Champion at age 12 in late 2002. He's been recognised by the FIDE as an international master since 2009. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of Ian Milne, who passed away on November 6, 2018, at the age of 90. An architect, avid historian and proud Kingstonian, Mr Milne, along with the late Margaret Angus, co-founded First Capital Day. Later, Mr Milne's idea of a First Capital Festival between June 15th and July 1st became known as First Capital Days. In 2001, a group led by Mr Milne was successful in obtaining City Council's first declaration that the area surrounding City Hall be known as First Capital Place. Thanks to his contributions, the occasion of Kingston's choice as Canada's first capital continues to be celebrated each year. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Councillor Neil.
After all these, I push the wrong, but we show me as a, in favour?
I think that would be, would be fine. Can we recall the vote, please? And that carries. We have no deferred motions tonight, so we will move on to reports. First is Report Number 90 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor George, that Report Number 90 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have a number of separations. Mr Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so right now, we have Clause 2, Clause 4, Clause 5, Clause 6, separated for councillor Bohm. Are there any other separations? Councillor Hutchison?
Not sure about all those numbers, but I'd like to separate 1, 5 and 6, please.
So at this point, there's really no, there's really no point in trying to, try to do a few of them beforehand, we're basically doing them all individually, so that's fine. We'll start with Clause 1, Agreement for Cartograph OMS Subscription Renewal. Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you. I have a question. On this agreement for the Cartograph OMS Subscription Renewal, I've no objection to renewing it as it's a very important replacement reserve fund technic, technology. What I'm a bit concerned about is that the single-source contract exceeds $50,000 is the, is the rule for bringing these, these type of motions to council, but the amount being requested is considerably more than $50,000. It's 386,757 US, and I calculated that out at the exchange value and added the rebated tax, and it comes to something like 542,000 in Canadian. And the part, that's not even the part that most concerns me, it's the last clause that says, "Authority to Director Engineering renew the agreement for future periods, subject to renewal agreement being reviewed by the Director of Legal Services." In other words, it won't come back to council. And that's 10 times more than the amount, so what I'd like to do is separate the last clause, because I'm not going to vote for that. I just pointed, as I said, it's 10 times more than the rule. It's more than that, and I think if that's the case, then it should come back to council.
Does staff have a comment on this? Ms Kennedy.
Thank you, through you, your worship. So yes, the bylaw does require anything over 50,000 comes back because it is a sole source. I believe in this case that the company that we're awarding to is an exclusive distributor in Canada for cart graphs, so we don't have much choice in that. We've got a significant investment in the cart graph system to date, and so it's not something that we'd want to consider changing. So in that regard, we've just asked for that delegated authority to the, to the director in terms of ongoing. If in the future, there was, there was a decision to, to review and see if there was a potential for a different system, then that would come back at that point.
Okay, so, yes?
Respond to that, 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 we're talking, I think, five years is what I read here, so I think that's a whole other council. It's two councils, okay? So I still stick with what I said, I want that separated. I'm not voting for it.
That's fine, it's separated. Is there anybody to speak to Clause 1? So first, we will call the vote then on paragraphs 1 and 2 under Clause 1. Please vote. And that carries. Now we will call the vote on paragraph three of clause one. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Clause two, appointment of municipal bylaw enforcement officers to enforce the no smoking, anti-idling, and regulation of water supply bylaws. Okay, we will call the vote, please. Oh, did he?
Excuse me, the councillor still signed in.
Okay, our next clause is the Kingston Penitentiary Tours 2019. Call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause four, strategic priorities update, end of 2014, 2018 council term. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you. I have a question. So under the item, it's on page 13 of the report, the item increase assessment growth to limit tax rate increases. There's a really good report here. Gives a lot of information about the changes in the assessment levels and the permits, the building permits, broken down by category. And there was a reduction, which of course is contrary to what we would like to see for increasing assessment growth as the strategic priority. But there's also, there's something that's regarding the number of multi-residential units that are not actually online and being occupied, which would be the way that we would collect the occupancy, I believe. Could staff just explain how that revenue comes through the permitting? It happens when there are buildings that are approved that are not being built? And what is the reason for that? And what are the ramifications year over year?
Yes, CEO Hunt.
So well, through your worship, I'll start with sort of that. And there may be some information that the treasurer would like to add as it relates to assessment, but Commissioner Hurdle may also wish to add in terms of building permits and the occupancy. So I haven't found the exact reference, Counselor Stroud, but I'm assuming it has to do with the building permit report for, I think it was October, that's included in this particular section, as well as some comments about the number of applications for multi-residential units that are underway or in process that are at various stages. They could be at an OMB or an LPAT stage, or they could be out of that stage, ready for building permit issuance, in which case they may be at site plan and then moving forward to building permit. And of course, a property is only assessed from the standpoint of occupancy once it receives the occupancy permit, and at that point in time, it triggers the taxation when it is occupied. So that's essentially what we're referring to there. Theoretically, if everything went smoothly, you'd end up in a situation when planning approved the applications and the site plan process was completed, then the building permit would be initiated and construction would start, and within 18 months or so, it would be occupied. So that's generally what it's trying to describe. And it's indicating that because there are delays that are not necessarily in the hands of staff and/or council with respect to these, that those permits will not actually be turned into taxation, which is in accordance with what the priority was of council, until such time as they become occupied, which could be two or two and a half years later.
Right. So we've done our part. We've allowed the, through plan process, allowed these forward, but they're getting held up at various hurdles. And is it true that there is a possibility that it's at the discretion of the property owner of when to begin construction, even if all approvals have been given?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So the report doesn't specifically identify those, I think, units, councillors that you're referring to as far as approved units but are not in the construction phase. It does identify the ones that have been appealed at the LPAT, which is 1,300 approximately at the time of writing the report. But there are a number of units that we know have gained approvals and have not started construction at this point. We don't have control over that, and that's part of the information we will be reporting back to council in early 2019, as we are also going to get an update on the vacancy rate in late this year.
Thank you. That's good to hear. We're going to get that. And on the topic of the vacancy rate, it does say this in the report, I just want to point out to the colleagues, there's 0.7% that we hear about a lot around the neighborhoods and stuff. That is the multi-residential vacancy rate. So the units of the multi-residential that's in this report, for example, and that is, obviously, that number would change if some of these approvals that have been given were actually constructed and opened for business, right? So part of the reason for the low vacancy rate is not in the hands of council. So I just want everyone to understand that. That's what's in this report, that we can approve things, but they still aren't getting built sometimes. And the vacancy rate is rock bottom for multi-residential, right? But this report doesn't say what we might do to encourage that those units be built. And if it's at the discretion of the landowner, maybe we can look at that in, at some other time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you through you, Mayor Patterson. I'd like to thank the staff for this report. I think it's an awesome report. It's got a lot of great information, and I think you worked really hard throughout this last four years, and I'd like to thank you for that. I'd also like to highlight one thing in the report that's very important for me, and that was the airport. And it reads very well with what you've done, the new instrument landing gear, or, sorry, instrument landing system that'll be completed in December. That's so important for the airport. Also, that you've been in discussions with Air Canada for different routes and other airlines. You're putting charging stations, airport micro website, and new public art installations. Also, air carriers to introduce competition to the Kingston market. These are all great things, and I'm so happy to see this come to fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will call the vote on clause four. But what we've done is we have separated it into two paragraphs for Counselor Bohm's sake. So first, we will call the vote on the first paragraph, which is everything that is outside of anything to do with utilities Kingston. So first, we will call the vote on paragraph one of clause four. And that carries. Now we will call the vote on paragraph two of clause four. It carries by a vote of seven to five. Were five of you planning to vote no to that? Okay. Okay. Can we revote on that? Okay, so we will revote on paragraph two of clause four. And that carries. Next, we have clause number five, capital project status report, third quarter 2018. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you. I have a question about the sixth paragraph on page 77, which talks about the affordable housing and land acquisition. And in that account, according to the page 79, there's 2.7 million dollars. And the, we're reallocating that. So my first question is, what is the Affordable Capital Investment Program? And how is it, is it related to housing?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, a number of years ago, council established two programs in the capital budget for affordable housing. One was the Affordable Housing Capital Contribution, which essentially was funding to actually go towards the construction of new units. And the other one was the Affordable Housing Land Acquisition and Disposal Program, which was a million, at the time of the establishment of the fund, it was a million dollars per year, so that the city could look at acquiring properties that could be utilized for affordable housing purpose. And we did acquire two properties with that fund. So we have acquired Seven Wright Crescent, that you'll all remember, and we have another one at 1316 Princess Street as well, that we're going through the final planning stages process for that particular property. So at this point, and looking at opportunity and options in terms of acquiring properties, it takes us not only quite a lot of time to find the appropriate properties that we can acquire for affordable housing, but it also takes us quite a lot of time in terms of redevelopment of those properties. And what we're seeing is that the demand is more on the actual capital investment. So organizations like Kingston Front Act Housing Corporation that may have property that they can build on but don't necessarily have enough money to do that. So that's where we're getting or we're seeing most of the demand, working with our partners. And that's why we're proposing to close the land acquisition account currently and to actually look at reinvesting dollars into the capital affordable housing program, which will be towards construction with the budget with the new council. So because we do have currently two properties that we still need to proceed with construction with.
Thank you, further ado. The, there's quite a bit of interest on the new council about housing. So I'm wondering about 1316 Princess Street. I believe that that was deferred because we didn't have the infrastructure in place on Princess Street, so that could actually, anything could actually be built there. That, and we were preoccupied with 1200 Princess Street. So I'm just wondering, is that a real choice?
CEO Hunt.
So through you, so we've been working with Utilities Kingston on the next four-year plan that'll come before council's prior to the 2019 budget. And that work that's required to service and make this property available to build on is going to be contemplated as part of that plan. So we believe that that property will be ready to go in the next year or so. And in fact, it is just in the process of receiving a record of site condition on that that has taken a couple of years to move through the process.
Okay, thank you. Curried about where the money was going and what it was going to be used for, and I got a good answer on that. This satisfies me anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still waiting for one, please.
And that carries. Okay, clause six, a word of contract, 2019 development charge background study and bylaw development consultant selection. We will call the vote, please. Yes, Counselor Hutchison?
I just have a comment on that. On that, just a question about the development fees and that. I remember the last one we did in 2014, myself and a couple of other councillors spent quite a bit of time on it, and it was not easy to understand, which I think staff agreed was the case. And so I'm just hoping that with this comes forward, there will be a very clear explanation of. There is an explanation in there, and that's actually, in some ways, the easiest part about what they are and what they're spent on. But how they're determined is not so, not so easy to understand. And so I have a, I've got a couple of questions. I'll ask staff later about them. But one of the things I wanted to know was, will we added social housing to this?
So Counselor Hutchison, I just want to pause there because this, this item is with respect to choosing who the consultant will be. So unless your question is related to that, obviously, there's going to be lots of discussion around the details of this study later on, but I'm just trying to confine to the actual item that's before us.
Well, it'll be a bit late at that point because we'll have hired them, right, and told them what we want, right? I just want to make sure that certain considerations are involved.
CEO Hunt.
So I can probably help with the answer to that through your worship. So the legislation for development charges is prescriptive, and it describes the elements that are to form the components required for the review that ultimately find its way into a bylaw that council will consider. And so that legislation has been updated within the last eight months, and will guide the consultant. The consultant firm is renowned in Ontario for the work as an expert in this particular field. And all of the services, including the social housing component that was part and parcel of the previous study, will be considered as part of the study. We know that as part of the initial review and discussions we've had with the firm.
Yeah, for now.
Okay. We will call the vote on clause six. Please vote. And that carries. Clause seven, a word of contract for flooring installation, Rita Crest Home. And that carries. And finally, clause eight, a word of contract for Microsoft Dynamics X readiness assessment. Counselor Neal.
Just a very quick question for the treasurer, if I might. A lot of outside agencies and groups utilize the city for financials. Will, whatever system we bring in, in the end, will still be fully accessible by all of those agencies that now depend on the city?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through your worship. So yes, we're actually not changing the system. This is just upgrading and enhancing the system that we've put in place over this last 18, 24 months. But yes, the agencies that we have a contract with, that we're providing them accounting and bookkeeping services, are on the system. So that will continue. And actually, as we enhance the system, they'll benefit from that as well, because they use the system for the financial reporting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will call the vote on Clause Eight. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to report number 91 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present the room, the Administrative Policies Committee, and I ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number 91 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so we're going to separate out Clause Two for Counselor Cannon's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations? Okay, seeing none, then we will vote on the remaining items as a whole. So Clause One, Tax Writeoffs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. Clause Three, Minor Amendments to the Flag Display Policy for Downtown Gateway Project. And Clause Four, Smoking Bylaw Update Cannabis. Please vote. And that carries. Now, we'll deal with Clause Two, Residential Rental Licensing. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to give a bit of a synopsis, because there were some questions around this. Perhaps it's the title that's possibly confusing for some members.
I apologize. Could I just raise a really quick point of order that has to do with potential?
Point of order?
I just need clarification, otherwise I need to leave the room. For those of us that declared a conflict on the long-term residential licensing, I just want to seek confirmation from staff that what's before us today is strictly regarding short-term Airbnb, in which case I don't believe we would be in a conflict.
So based on my reading of what's in front of us, we only have items with respect to the short-term rentals. So I think that that's your answer, Counselor Neal.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
It's okay, thanks. It's the short-term rentals, which are 30 days or less, for anyone who was confused about that. This item was originally part of a larger recommendation that came before the committee, and it was separated, the short-term rental licensing was separated from a larger-scale rental licensing program. And the larger-scale, longer-term residential licensing was separated from the original recommendation and deferred. So that's why it's not before us, and we really are just discussing dealing with the Airbnb. Most of the discussion at the committee was regarding the longer-term rental licensing program. And I think I will leave it at that. It's, I am voting in favor of this recommendation, the short-term one. And I thank staff for their work on this.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on Clause Two. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole. We have a number of information reports. So if you have questions, please just raise your hands as I read through them. Number one, Public Engagement Status Report, Information Report. Number two, Delegated Authority Heritage Approvals. Number three, Tender and Contract Awards Subject to the Established Criteria for Delegation of Authority for the month of September 2018. Number four, 2018 Municipal Election Results of Referendum Question and Potential Next Steps. Counselor Stroud?
No, I withdraw my question. I'm going to ask after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Just very quickly, I trust the next step forward would be for the next council to bring forward a motion to enact the will of the people as shown on the referendum.
So I'm on the record publicly is that I will be bringing forward just such a motion early on in the new council. Yes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Kate Nive, Quarterly Report, 2018. And number six, Third Quarter Operating Budget Status Report for 2018. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business, that as requested by foundations and kink, that council reclaimed December 15, 2018, as day of consent conversations in the city of Kingston. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Turner.
Please vote. And that carries. CEO Hunt?
Agreed for us to answer our community and develop our city, and we appreciate the work and the effort and the time that you've put in to help us do that. And hopefully, you have felt that you've received the support in order to also do that from the perspective of a councillor. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have no new motions tonight. Are there any notices of motion? Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
With Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Minutes of City Council Meeting Number 2018-23, held Tuesday, November 6, 2018, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications, other business. I'd like to take a moment, as CEO Hunt has done, I'd like to, first of all, thank each and every one of you around this table. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with you over the last four years, very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And a special thank you to city staff for the relationship that we've been able to build, and for the great work and recommendations and professionalism, being able to accomplish a great deal. I think Counselor Turner said it best. When you read through that report detailing the work on our strategic priorities, it was really striking just how much we've been able to get accomplished. So we've set a high bar. I think there's certainly lots of great things ahead. But I do want to give a special thank you to Counselor Cannon, Counselor George, Counselor Shell, and Counselor Turner. The four of you will all be missed, and we do want to say a special thank you for all of your work and your commitment and the many hours that you've put in. And we do wish you all the best in this next season. And we want you to know that you're welcome anytime back here at council. So with that, everybody else, I look forward to seeing in two weeks' time. There we go. Counselor George?
Thank you, as I ride home in chambers. I also just wanted to extend a big thank you specifically to city staff for all the years that they've assisted me and listened to my complaining, and have gone above and beyond in most cases to help out, to make sure that what was needed to satisfy the concerns of the residents I've represented, they've been there to help me. So I know they don't get enough thanks, and I just wanted to be able to publicly state it, because I don't have all of their email addresses. So if we can get it out tonight and tweet it, that would be great. And to all of you that are going to be here again for another term, all the best of luck. I know you're going to have a lot of challenges ahead of you, but you've been entrusted with a duty by those that elected you, and I'm sure you'll serve them well. So, and thank you, to your worship, for your leadership. I think you've been a terrific mayor, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shell?
I need to have, because I feel the same way. I would like to thank everyone. It's been an incredible ride for the past eight years. Deciding that I wanted to retire, I find I'm sleeping really well these days, or nights. It has been an incredible learning experience. I started this because I thought, how does a city work? That was a major part of my focus. We live in a fabulous city, but it's not magic. How does it work? And I have discovered it takes hundreds of people working in an incredibly coordinated fashion, with very good leadership from the staff, and then the council, as we all learned in the beginning, and learned a lot, and had to become experts in many fields, well, take good advice from experts in many fields. And I've found many new friends, and I would like to thank everyone very much for this incredible experience. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Counselor Turner?
I have to stand for this occasion. I'd like to follow suit as well with my other members here, and thank everyone, and thank you, Mayor. You were a great mentor to me, and you were a great mayor, and I thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the staff and CEO Hunt. You were a great mentor to me as well, and other staff members. It was a great journey, and it was a great experience, and I'm very humbled and very honored to have served my community. And it was a great council. You guys were an amazing bunch of people, and it was a great experience. So thank you very much, everyone, and good luck in your next term.
All right. Counselor Cannon?
I guess it's my turn. Couldn't be that guy. I guess I'd want to start off by thanking my wife. She was technically the first person that voted for me, and stuck behind me for the whole time. Our spouses do put up with a lot. It's not an easy job. There's lots of ups and downs. And I just want to thank the people and the community that I grew up in, that I actually don't live in anymore, but the community that I grew up in. It's a really cool experience to grow up as a Kingstonian and get elected by the people in your community, and, you know, walk around soccer fields in your neighborhood, and get to talk to people who voted for you. It's a really neat experience, and you get to meet a lot of people. And I'm really thankful for the relationships that I have here, and I think that it's a very unique experience, and I think that all the people who are in this room can relate. So I'm very fortunate to have those relationships and have those experiences with you guys, a lot of them good, a lot of them bad, but that's life in general. I think it's not whether you win or lose, it's what you learned. And I think when you come on council, you learn a lot about your life, and I'm very thankful to have done that with you guys. So thanks so much.
Very good. So here we go, to officially end the last council meeting of this term. Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Okay, what would bylaws be without some separations? Counselor Bohm, you are excused for the first three bylaw votes, please. Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw two be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor George, that Clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw two, three readings.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw two be given its third reading. Counselor Bohm, you may return, please. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that bylaws three through eight be given first and second reading.
Please vote.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that Clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw three, three readings.
Please vote.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Shell, that bylaws one and three through eight be given their third reading.
Please vote. That carries. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Turner. Please vote. And we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.